Do the make it so you need to make it.
Oh, gotcha.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, I can hear you too.
Okay, nine o'clock we told you the order, start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to Republic of which is stands on nation under God, native is the liberty and justice.
Go call.
Bonjour.
Here.
Craylow.
Here.
Brady.
There. Here.
Gilbertson.
Here. Any conflict of interest, I appreciate it. Getting approval agenda.
I need to add. Need to. For joint jurisdictions, small community appointments members.
I have a brief discussion to add. I just, Operation Green Light is something that I discussed briefly with Noah and I don't have a resolution prepared for this meeting, but I could bring it to the next one, but I wanted to discuss briefly.
And then also discussion on the closing of the transfer of the Vermillion Police Department's current building to the county, however, in that stage. And just kind of what happened with that.
Great, great, great.
Got motion. No, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same. Motion passes. Prove minutes.
So move. Right, I have one small thing here. Towards the end, dissect the last page. Our project includes one hundred seventy-nine thousand. That might be a little lower. Could you say like between one seventy-nine and one fourteen? I think those are the numbers we had. It depends on a grant. We're going to get that yet, so.
All right.
Lower is better.
I'll say one fourteen to one thirteen.
Yeah.
We'll get through the second minute. Second, motion of the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those same signs, motion passes. Are there any visitors there? Hearing none. Discussion regarding planning commission appointments.
All right, yeah, so everyone go. So the planning commission, obviously the point about you guys and coming to the end of the year, we have a position opening up. You know, coming due. And so I'm trying to just future proof the county for having see her positions open up. Those kinds of working like C cog and stuff like that on maybe point and table and all that fun stuff. Just kind of making it to where if anything happens, we're still on the clear. Obviously, nothing done today, but just kind of bringing it up saying, hey, let's go ahead and try and get this stuff going. So that way on the person here, we can always have that appointment, whether it's the four-year term limit, you know, or three to five-year terms. And then probably do the four-year terms, you know, and a little bit or never have.
So Noah and I have talked a little bit. He's got, C cog has drafted up some bylaws that some other counties utilize for their planning commission, putting out the procedure for how the planning commission operates, but also a procedure for appointments. We, the idea is to bring to, I'm Noah, but Noah here over the next week and prepare what we believe is a document that can be sent for the mission then in anticipation of next week's meeting if the commission is so inclined to approve those bylaws or group of bylaws, it'd have to come from an open meeting. So we're just kind of working on the preliminary stages of, it seems like we've got some people that have been on the planning commission for a long time that maybe have gotten ready to no longer want to serve in that capacity, but also have one seat that's coming to the end of this year. So restructuring within statute, the planning commission would get to get or get to bring to you making decisions whether or not to make a policy of restructuring of the planning commission. What Noah is discussing is one idea that C cog has presented is, and that we've talked with C cog about, he had there's four planning commissioners right now, plus a member of the commission and making four-year terms for those planning commissioners, so that every single year a planning commissioner term comes due, and so there'll be appointments by this commission annually, either reappointing or a new appointment of a planning commissioner. And then this bylaws would include as a standard procedure, what that looks like as far as reappointments or new appointments and a procedure and a process. They're like you mentioned, you know, for applicants every, they'd be annually, there's only one seat every year. So notes, you know, nothing beyond just information to you guys today. We'll work together to continue to finalize that the bylaw potentially a resolution and anticipation of bringing you guys the last meeting of October. That way, if you aren't inclined to want to move forward with something like what they're going to present, but Noah's working on. If we, you know, ready to be utilized going into the first in twenty twenty-six.
So just to hear from you, that way, everything's good to go. That's pretty much it. Any questions? Appreciate the work done.
Sounds good, bud. You guys are working on it.
Sure. I think Noah's got those.
Yep, so for the D B and the A having a small group, just hammering out most of the things prior to it actually going. Choose the planning commission, you know, we all hammered out, ready to go. We're just making a small committee for it. I was looking at Dave and then Mr. Brady. And it's good. More or less, just because knowing it's a little bit tenured left on his appointment. We can have longevity in that sense, and hopefully David's already on the planning commission. So and then pretty much good.
Who's, who's, I guess.
Oh, it would be, uh, okay, that's your. So.
So we should be able to point this.
Could you say the name one more time? I didn't quite get them.
It'd be Dave, Kevin, and Sydney.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah. So there's any points there is then we just discuss stuff prior to and then bring it, bring it forward when needed.
So get a motion. Second. Motion of the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes. Jeffrey, you want to do your Operation Green Light?
Yeah, I can. I think he's pretty quick too. This is something I wanted, first wanted to just ask, have the other commissioners received any communications about this from like Naco or South Dakota Association of Counties? Anybody heard about it before today?
Is this the veterans?
Yeah, yep. Okay, so that's really basically the information I wanted to have, make sure it's something you guys were aware of. I'd had a brief informal conversation with Noah, asking if it was something that his office would think would be valuable at all. And he seemed to indicate that he, that it would, and I think he was even moving ahead and on maybe getting, getting a hold of some green light or figuring out where to get some green lights. So if, if the other commissioners are amenable, I'll prepare a resolution for the next meeting, but I just realized that we're getting on up close to the actual week. It would be between November fourth to November eleventh. And if the other commissioners, if it's consensus that we are interested in this, then I'll bring a resolution to the October twenty-eighth meeting that we can approve formally. But I just wanted to get it out there now in case I know I wanted to have any informal conversations with like DCDC or any other organizations around that might help us publicize.
Or put lights. So just in the offices, yeah, so I just put a lamp with a green light in my office. Oh, when I clock out for the night, I turn it on. My office would be green from the outside. I mean, ten percent of our county is veterans, so I think it's good to show this for that. I go to Goodwill and my lamp. I mean.
Well, we need more than one, right?
I mean, it'd be a couple around the courthouse.
Can we get one for the new facility?
Yeah, I can go ahead and get one.
Well, you probably put it in that lobby. At least that would be lit up at night and wouldn't bother anybody else, right?
That's a great idea.
So.
That's all.
And then we can, we can jump. If that's, that's everything for that, Jeffrey?
Yeah, yeah. If everybody's sorry, but I'll just make sure that we have a resolution ready for the next, next meeting.
Okay. And then we'll go to the playground part, please.
Playground part, please. Yeah, so is that, you can have the.
So at the end of, at the end of last Tuesday meeting, based off of the conversation that we had, I drafted an amendment to the lease agreement considering the addendum to that twenty twenty-one lease between the county and the Clay County Park Association. The intention behind this is kind of threefold. It's one, to clarify the lease term. In the language of the original lease, I felt like there was an ambiguity about what the term of that lease was. So in the addendum, it's just restating or stating more clearly that this lease is now a month-to-month lease can be terminated by either party with thirty days notice. And that continues until one indefinitely until one party decides to terminate said lease. The other thing that I did was I assigned hunting rights to Lizzie in the Clay County Park Association. Just to make it clear as to who holds the hunting rights between the relationship between the county and the park board. Whether with this addendum, then the park board would need to work out as to who owns or holds the hunting rights between the landlord or the, you know, the landlord of the of the hunting property versus the individual or Mick Olson who's farming it. They would have to work that out themselves. This would just be assigning any rights the county has to the park association, the park association can do what they need to do to make things right on their own side. Lastly, it also very specifically assigns hunting liability to the Clay County Park. That's just a general statement that's intended to further remove liability from the county and assigning it that relates specifically to hunting rights, which is already incorporated in the original lease. It's just spelled out now. I did get asked by Glenn whether or not there is that portion, that there's a small sliver of land on the north side of Timber Road across from the Habe department. I, my understanding is that that portion of that small sliver is not a part of this lease. As I read that, I don't see that that, that parcel is incorporated. So his question was, do we have concern about that area? Rightfully so, because there's a lot of homes in that area, which are close to the road. As I read the lease itself, that parcel is not included. I'll, I'll give clarification of that, so maybe, but yesterday was of course a holiday and it's early Tuesday morning. So my recommendation would be to move forward under my assumption, believe that parcel is not included. And then I'll ensure that that's true, and if there is, I mean, the backup of what we're going to do, I'll let you know, but I think that pretty clearly states that that little part, part of part was not a part of the lease, so we don't need to worry about it.
Hopefully everybody be responsible, but should we put up no hunting signs then?
Glenn, the next question was that. I said, I think that falls outside. I think the answer to that would be yes. I think it'd probably be wise to place the place of the hunting sign.
Let's not trespass.
That would cover everything. Yeah. You get it ultimately up to the commission as to what signage and change you would want on that parcel, but it's not, you know, we're not assigning hunting authority there. And so what you want to see there as far as signage of anything, probably will be a wide idea from a liability perspective.
Will you fancy a new gold tiger? I'll donate. So yeah, what would the no trespassing cover everything?
It will. The only question would be is if people believe that they have the hunting rights to the other parcels and they know that way, and they don't, but accounting, do they, do they think that they also have the right to hunt on there as well? And my idea why is to put up a no hunting sign as well, so I'm sure it's clear.
That was my question, you know. I can't believe anybody would spend that, but if you let people be stupid the whole week.
If you get, if you got pushed out of the yeah, the other part now.
So, so does this allow, when we, when we sign this, does this allow them to be entered into that chap's contract?
This would allow them, the way that this is drafted and the intention behind this addendum is that all hunting rights belong to Clay County Park, and any agreement they make with the state, with that chap agreement would be between the Clay County Park Association and state. So yes.
Jeffrey, did you talk to Nick?
I haven't yet talked to Nick yet because until this is agreed upon by the commission level, the Clay County Park Board, it's still ambiguous who has those rights. So I was waiting until we get this resolved and then that would be the next conversation we'd have.
Okay. It'll be in their court, so. I didn't see, I don't know what the, the way it was written, so I would move to approve the lease agreement. The addendum to the lease agreement, yes, thank you.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those same sign, motion passes.
Why is, is any term you get numbered? We can get that also to the president of the park association. You know.
Yep. And I, I ran that draft by, and that'd be Kelly Ashby, and we have a park board meeting coming up on Thursday. So they, that, you know, I made sure they understood that, that what they were looking at was just a draft and it hadn't yet been approved, but they said they didn't see any issues with it, so I expected it's a neutral corrupt.
With their vouchers. Glenn must have seen that. We'll jump to vouchers. Any questions on?
I, I had one. On eighty-one fifty-five. That nutrient.
It's a chemical problem.
Yeah, chemical.
Because they get hired to do townships too, where they get reinforced.
Okay.
So I mean, there's, and I don't know how many townships, but I know there are some townships that they do, plus they do state highways that they're hired to do.
Okay. Just, yeah, seem like a big number, but I just want to check.
So I would assume it all. All would involve all of that.
Okay.
And he's been out spraying, you know, not too long ago, so. Start, start driving down the road, it wouldn't take too long. It's been too much.
Yeah, you know, that's.
Any other just questions on vouchers? I'll entertain the motion.
We approve.
Second. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven to amend resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, proposing a auditor's office for training. So it'll be closed from the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of October.
I think I said in there the nineteen, one year, this November as well.
Yeah.
Our, the original resolution had some dates in September, and they didn't have those trainings, so October, November, all right.
So are you closing sometime on the forty-eighth then too?
After the commission meeting, yeah.
Okay, so.
So the, the training on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth will start early in the morning on the twenty-ninth, so we'd like to head out there the day ahead. The one in November doesn't start until after lunch, so we can leave that morning and still get there. You won't have to go early for that one.
Okay, good reservation, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Jeffrey?
Sure, I'm just seconding. Yep, but somebody else did as well.
So I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, welcome.
Bonjour.
Yes.
Craylow.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Easy.
Yes.
Gilbertson.
Yes. Motion passes. Jeffrey, do you have anything for Clay County?
Uh, no.
Any, well, just building project updates, because I don't have anything.
I mean, can we do the performance directly, the, the closing?
Yeah. Because of that next building project that they tied directly in the woods, so. Back in twenty twenty-three, the county and city interdepartmentally purchase and sale agreement for police department that currently sits in the same building as the sheriff's office and dispatch and emergency management. The building, their side of the building, Vermillion Police Department side, that's going to be converted into the state attorney's office. That building itself is owned by the city, the land underneath it is owned by the county. So that was the agreement back in the eighties. The intention through the process back in twenty twenty-three was there was some the whole land swap, there was some land out in that new spot that we own, out of the new law enforcement zone, the template triple I N. So we ended up getting possession out and transferring it over to the city. And we ended up also in agreement purchasing this building from the city for two hundred and one thousand six hundred dollars. They still haven't effectuated that, there's a closing clause in that purchase and sale agreement that was signed off on in twenty twenty-three by both the commission and the city council. That just says that the plan of substantial completion of the new building, formal closing will take place of this building. If it's not real estate, you don't really need a deed. But the document that, that needs to be, you know, prepared has already been prepared, and that would be the first sale agreement. I spoke with John Prescott, I've also had a conversation with Lisa and Richard Keith. I found back in the eighties, the county purchased a plot of land, and I actually think it was connected to this courthouse area.
Hey there.
They purchased from a Jeffrey. That I do with the county back in nineteen eighty, and all it says is the building situation on whatever. A conversation with Lisa, the way to go about doing this would be to, I can prepare another quick claim deed similar to this, that's just going to say that we're quit claiming this building and then attaching the sale and purchase agreement as well to that quick claim deed. Since we are, since we're conveying, since the city is conveying that way up to the county, my understanding is it should be the city that signs off on this quick claim deed, not the county. So in bringing it to you, my anticipation is to prepare this deed and then provide it to, to John Prescott this week, and my anticipation would be that they sign off on this quick claim deed next Monday, if they're meeting, I hope that by that time this building is owned by the county in anticipation of reservation starting. So no formal action, but if I need action, I'm going to call them the next week if I need somebody's signature, but it should just be the, it should be a good city. Last quick claim deed I prepared was for landing county to the city, and the county commission signed that, but maybe not the city, so we'll see. Flip-flopping who the parties are, so as I read that, it should be the city to sign off on this. There, to work with, there's not. And it's not real estate. I think that the purchase agreement speaks for itself, this closing, you know, it is effectuating closing terms by filing this quick claim deed. Really, from John Prescott and I, we had our conversation, my thought behind this is in thirty to fifty years from now, or seventy years from now, when people are trying to figure out what happened in twenty twenty-five, even though it doesn't, it's not real estate, when they go run the deeds, they can, they do a title search, they can do documents that squarely fill ownership, no, no question. So that should be all we need to do to effectuate closing, should be able to do it next week from along with the building.
That must have been from High Street all the way over, because that house was basically where the party happens, I think.
Well, you're talking like the judges, right?
Those tell me what helps.
Yeah, this is a, what this quick claim deed was back in the eighties, it said the building situation almost went into Snyder's division. I mean, I didn't even look to do that.
It's, it's, I don't think, you said that for the city?
This is just a deed that counts.
Well, if that's not the government party, well, I mean.
Didn't run it. I didn't, I found this a couple of years ago. I'm sure I grabbed it in anticipation of doing something similar today, but I don't remember now where it came from, but had to have known what I was looking at. So talk to Lisa, it seems like that's, even though it's not real estate, it's been done before. She said she would accept it, said I can attach the purchase and sale agreement to that quick claim deed as well. And then again, down the road, when somebody runs, ties it sort of on its property, they can see where ownership trends go.
Because the PD doesn't have a separate address, right?
No, no.
So do we, is there reference in what we are going to give them to that quick claim deed? Says the county owns everything up to eleven Kinder Street.
That'll be, that's already clear because the deed in and of itself.
That's more the legal description.
Yeah, the legal description is already, I mean, that's the real estate itself. There is no, the city has never owned real estate on this, you know, this way, nineteen twelve. This land came into custody or possession of the county of Woodmore. And that's, and it's this whole track, as I remember, because all been county land since nineteen twelve, nineteen eleven. So I won't reference land, I'm just going to reference a building. Once, I'll prepare that, I'll get it up through the city, if there's any questions or concerns, I'll expect to be next week before the realization starts all this. Do the resolution for stop signs on three fifteen, four fifty-six. This is just a resolution that puts the stop signs on the north side of the intersection and the east side of the intersection. Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And we've got, we've got stop and end signs over there.
Yeah, there was one called right about there.
All those in favor, welcome.
Bonjour.
Yes.
Craylow.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Easy.
Yes.
Gilbertson.
Yes. Motion passes. Now it's nine thirty. Okay, now we got bid opening for street bank stabilization for structure fourteen dash one twenty-five, dash one twenty. Do you have another one?
What's that?
They yell, is that?
Even after the deadline, the deadline was Friday at five o'clock, according to the notice that was published. Even after the deadline, the deadline was Friday at five o'clock, according to the notice that was published.
On the Dawson Bridge, I don't have my map.
We didn't understand you, Jeff.
Oh, sorry, uh, which bridge is this? I don't have my map with my numbers, is this Dawson?
Which bridge is that? Was it the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, three oh six, volume?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
By the way. Does the one right off of nineteen or the one right around, so?
Right off of nineteen.
Or is it a little bit west of these areas? The one that just comes with the big hole?
Yep.
That's the one where the, yeah. It's going again, yeah. Spent a lot of time and money on that. Said west. East of nineteen.
East of nineteen.
The very first one across the little Chris.
Yeah. Can't hear me, I'm not hearing anyone.
Yeah, we'll be going to executive session. Yeah. Motion to go into executive session, but we've moved to move into one twenty-five dash two dash three.
One twenty-five, two subsections, right?
I have a motion in a second, in front of the, actually, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say the sign, we're in executive session. We're going to have to ask everybody, step away.
Come on in.
Second, all those in favor, say aye, say the sign, we're in regular session.
Okay, we went into executive session, um, now that we're out, what we need to do here is, there was, uh, a notice of bidders that was put out in the newspaper. The notice specifically reads that sealed bids for this project will be received by the Clay County Auditor up to five P M. on Friday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with a bid open being conducted today at nine thirty. There was one bid that came in after that five P M. deadline on Friday, October tenth, pursuant to state law and case law, uh, the county cannot open this bid or accept this bid. So the advice I'm giving to the commission and the advice that I have to give for someone to state law is to open the bids pursuant to the notice that you, that was issued, um, and then consider the bid that are in front of you. The bid that was received late, um, by state law just cannot be considered. The one that was received late is from Rock Contracting, and it cannot be opened, cannot be.
That person here, do you have any questions on that? Okay, so. Okay, we'll start with, we've got Sukka, Sukka Construction. We've got Sukka Construction with a bid of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-six. Pretty digging. That, three D. Five hundred and eighty-four thousand, thirty-four dollars. Six oh five companies. Three hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty-one dollars and fifty minutes cents. Lions Construction. Three hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-one cents. First grade excavate, progress. One hundred and thirty-three thousand. Beaver Construction. Three hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, fifty cents. That's it. Okay, what I will do is, I'll take these back, go, go through and check them over again, I'll prepare, uh, the bid cancellation. I'll visit with the N R C S, I don't believe there is, just make sure that there's some sort of concurrence, uh, to award concurrence that they have, but I don't believe so, I think, I think, uh, but I'll find out for sure, just so we have everything, just, I'll have that, that here, that. Yeah, all right, yeah, yeah. But that, that last one, I hope he's the boss for, he's a, he's a good bid. I also want that, there's unusual work items in here that it was hard to view that, that. Rock Hall so. But I'll do a little quick analysis on this. No, I, what I, what I do is I take these back, I run off these scanners, so I have a copy of every two cases to get audited. Second bill of legs, both Carrie and I have a copy of everything. Why, and had prepares to take the first one. And if you do get it done early, Michael may have us have a meeting, so, because we don't have a meeting till Monday. Also, if you want that signed quicker, let us know. Okay, when you say having, oh, the, the next meeting, the next, next schedule meeting is in two weeks. And then, but I heard you talking about me as your sign, possibly, possibly.
Okay. I don't know, my, my guess is we won't need one for that, but.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll probably have it here this afternoon. I just, um, now the N R C S, last I visited with them are, are, are working. Oh, really? Evidently, they have a different deal, uh, I don't know. So that would be my only zinger is, I can't get a hold of, uh, anyone. Um, I might not get it right away, pretty good, I'll. But I'll, I'll find out. Procedure, I'm almost positive that it's, you know, it's, it's, it's under the, it's within the realm of our scope that we put together with the, with P M. and N R C S and, and with the county, so I think it's up to. I just want to make sure, uh, this is, I don't do a lot of this, N R C S type projects, so. Lots of experience on that, of the procedural. Sounds good, okay? Anything else, man? Contract, weight construction for renovations.
We're here, you provided your packet, I looked it over, we made a couple of tweaks to the final contract. Um, I think I'm moving to really change it. Couple of, you provide the, so, yes, we have both rescheduled and scope narratives concluded in the whole of the contract as well. Uh, page is fifty-seven, that's the start of exhibit C, um, through sixty would be the narrative, so that would be part of exhibit C. Uh, we do have an exhibit B that will come later, um, that is basically just confirmation, have to get a hundred percent, like, construction doc, documents out when we sign up to that point, so. But right now, we're still in the pre-construction for this technical, so.
We could also would agree upon the minimum compensation, section two point one, twenty-one, I could add. I believe so, yeah, what was the final wording on that one? Two hundred, two point one, twenty-one.
Yeah, uh, compensation, so that would be the design build compensations, each one separate. Uh, the safety center was the nineteen seventy-four, and the courthouse was seven, seven thousand. Seven thousand nine hundred and seventy.
That's where the design portion is.
Yes. Um, we have, we had the, uh, we're still under budget, we heard like we talked about last week, we ensured that we provided for what we felt comfortable with as far as, um, being under budget, we should, we think, out of it, out of the project, the scope of the project, to ensure that we had contingencies, you know, things like this, of course, we're a lot, a lot, want to make sure that design portion is, is certainly something that we needed to, you know, article two point one, one one allows for, so. Um, I reviewed this, I, I worked with Austin yesterday as well as their general counsel, we went back and forth on full, ample things. I feel confident with the terms of it, it's also been looked at by Tegra, Tegra will lead the contract as well. Yeah, it's fairly written, I think it protects the, the county as well as I want it to, and, um, my recommendation would be to move forward with it. As, as it's been drafted.
It's not good bedtime reading, I tell you that.
I, it did include the limited damage provision, similar to what we did on the last project, that's under two point three point two, that can match up what we have in the, in the project and courthouse. Was an issue there, and I don't think this could be one here, so.
One thing in our favor is, everything's empty and direct, I mean, we'll ever should, should be going day after day after day, we won't be, we're going to get a, yeah, stop.
Yeah, so, and my understanding is get this signed off on today, apply for permits.
Correct.
This week.
Hopefully, yeah, get this done today, hopefully we're sending it today or tomorrow. Um, which permits?
Building permits, just to get the product started.
Through the city?
Yeah.
So it's just seventy-five bucks?
Right.
Or is it a Sunday agreement?
Yes, yep.
But I mean, just so they don't try and charge you for a building permit?
Okay, yep.
You still need to do that resolution, you haven't done that yet, but they can't charge you for a building permit, because they're under home rule.
Okay. Yeah, we can have that discussion, thanks for bringing that up, yeah, but, because even though you're the contractor, you're the, you're the contractor, so county property, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect.
Hope you ever get into that situation, city municipality is under home rule charter, they can't charge other public institutions. Building permit, they can only charge, um, actual inspection fee costs. Because I believe Sukka is under home rule charter also.
And sound like turnaround time from the city's perspective, a week or less, so, still leaning that between them on the twenty-seven.
Correct, yep. So we need to announce that we will not be here.
Yeah, we should.
And so, yeah, and start posting. We didn't just say that last.
Yeah, and we had that in the last seven minutes, and then I'll post it, I'll put it.
Is the city removing all their desk and all their stuff that they're about to do?
You know, items remain, and actually, that's something that Scott and I, Glenn and Andy, Ron and I, the committee, had a conversation about last week. Today, we're going to go up and start marking things, we'll, eight, and so what's staying, what's going into the garbage, we've got friends got a metal pile that we can, that was, was scrapped and makes a lot of backups, and these old items that have been sitting around that are not of value, that have no, that have no purpose, and kind of, um, do anything with them, so a lot of those desks in this, in this building are built for us, so. Um, we're going to go through today and figure out what's for keeping, what's not, and if there's anything that needs to be, uh, anything on the commission that relates to, uh, circles, circles, we'll let you know. So that's going to start today, we was, we can't do anything penalty until this building is not occupied, which is sound like.
I don't know, yesterday, when? Did you get the cable in?
I wasn't here yesterday, I know Andy was out there working, I got a text from him, but what were they putting in?
The nine one one cable.
I don't know.
Put in the facility, and the phone, and phone cables, making, you know, working all that up.
Yeah.
Others.
Last week, Andy told us that he was hopeful, they all went well today and yesterday, that they could start that movement this later this week. So that's what I think we're hoping is occurring, and then we're going to start marking, there's been a lot of items that, from the city side that was already, in, most of the better items, if you would, are other county, or other city, um, uh, and he wanted those items, and they've already come in and taken them, those that are. And he wanted those items, so they don't come and take them, those that are left, it sounds like we're maybe have an end with, like, U S D U track. Need to come in and help with moving stuff, Andy said that the Sally Port, that you threaten out for inmates, um, can't be utilized during this construction project anyways, so he offered that up and said, feel free to just. Load that, that garage with items, it'd be better than. For sure, since.
Yeah, that was, I didn't know where you're gonna go with everything. We'll set stuff to go to dumpster or scrap.
Right, we were hoping the other box process would bring it down here, but you guys shouldn't be displaced until March. The displacement is likely gonna be with all the heavy demo, um, I anticipate you guys are gonna be able to come back here, since we're not working in this area before the conclusion of the project, so anything that we move at this pace.
Kind of crazy to move it into here.
Yeah. There's not gonna be a lot, it's gonna be safe, no.
No, I agree.
Ultimately, like I said, anything that the city owns, of value, other, other folks coming to build it.
And, uh, when you do move, like, the chairs, like, out of the conference terminal, if you put that in Sally Port, covered all the plastic, yes. Just to.
I might even use some of that stuff in my office.
And then, Andy was gonna, he was gonna talk to Ryan about the nine. As we, uh, we know, and it's not going with them, but we don't know what to do with them.
I'm assuming in all of this, even at three or five years old, it's gonna be out of there.
And I think it's three years old now, because I remember when I put it in, I was going, well, we're gonna get all the new stuff in a couple of years, and then we replace every, every two, three years anyway, so.
So, do we need to sign?
Well, yeah, just need an approval from the commission on this, uh, contract, and it's signature, it's ultimately approved, and I'll allow them to start getting to work.
And then we have the chair assigned, the contract, like.
Second. A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go same sign.
Aye. Yes, to be clear, there are two contracts, one's for the safety center and one's for the courthouse, sorry, I thought about that, excuse me. Uh, I didn't make a motion.
When they start on the safety center side, will that interrupt the course at all?
Shouldn't, no, other than just, they'll be. Move their parking.
Well.
I know, should we do two separate, or should I just amend it to? Just a, I mean, up to you, I think either one you can do, all right? I think you can raise, probably rescind it, probably, please just do another.
I'll, I'll resend my motion, I'll, I have, uh.
We've already voted.
Yeah, you can still rescind it and vote, resend it and. Okay. I'll resend my motion, so we can make a new one.
Second.
A motion in a second, we send. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All three passes.
Okay, so, I I moved that we accept the contract for the renovation of the old safety center and courthouse third floor. That's all good, you're two separate, oh, two separate, no.
Second. A motion in a second, you for the discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion passes.
But it says contract, contracts.
I would like, no. And then, one, it's. I'll get these standing, some got, so, thanks, thanks, guys. Is it better?
From Meyer Henry or for Meyer? Well, I'm waiting for it still, I, I had conference, I I sent out another email yesterday morning to Meyer Henry Sergeant Law Firm regarding the. Request essentially for, the request ultimately is for innovation at the county and, uh, Meyer Henry Sergeant regarding, um. Interacting of the document that's going to, uh, show ownership in the lease between the city and county afternoon, so. We've, it's kind of been on the back burner, have waited for final bills, when we had that conversation with Tom Grimmon regarding, uh, what this can look like in relation to the scope of the bond as well. Um, so, he's involved as well, so yesterday, I sent a couple of emails out, I'm just waiting to hear back from, from Todd, I've got an email out yesterday, I've had a conversation with John Prescott from the city, that conversation's here, and I. I wasn't here in that twenty twenty more, twenty twenty-two timeframe, and the agreement would be formed after the the bond was passed, so. What I first did was I said, well, what do we have in place that shows what the ownership intention is at that building? Doesn't seem like there's anything formally drafted, but it also feels clear that both parties are under the agreement that, um, the space. Similar to the building here, the space in which the Vermont Police Department will occupy will be owned by the police department, there'll be shared areas that'll also have. Co-ownership between the city and county, locker rooms, bathrooms, meeting spaces, interview interrogation rooms, break rooms, um. So, you know, I'll be looking to square up specifically what that is, but that's what we're working on, determining percentage of use of that building for city versus county.
Which Andy and Crystal, Andy and Ted, Dick, with Trevor should have that number.
Perfect.
Or maybe even back, somebody asked.
Yeah, real close to having that number, and, uh, my understanding is roughly thirty percent. And that's not exact number, but that's what I've been told from ones in the past, so, I'll get that number from them, but ultimately, what we need to have, the reason why I mean Todd and Tom both involved with this process is. There needs to be an agreement attracted, the land itself, the seven acres in which the, the, the building sits on. Is owned by the county and will continue to be owned by the county, the only thing that will change ownership hands is the percentage or the portion of the building that the city is occupying by the, solely or shared. So.
Is it in the contract that says, that states that the city has maintenance on there?
It, and for, yeah, we don't have any contracts, but absolutely, yeah, there'll be, there'll be an agreeing, a needs being agreement specifically as it relates to like maintenance in those areas, shared areas versus. Uh, areas that are wholly owned, I think Scott had an opinion about that as well, but those are terms that need to be worked out. Um, I'm waiting on, I, so I've sent them a more precise email to Todd yesterday. Outlining what my understanding of the scope of ownership will be, and now we're just waiting on.
That's where it's probably gonna get confusing, because you're gonna have to list out. The shared spaces.
Yeah, but hopefully, I think they're picked.
They have the lives, but it's gonna make the contract long.
Probably, and my guess would be.
We've got the conference room, we've got.
Yes.
Evidence, the armory, weight room.
Right.
Right, all those little things, the garage.
Yep, always. So, once we know, I mean, I'm waiting on an engagement letter from Todd to see, you know, and then also another conversation with him about kind of what that looks like, if I don't hear from him by probably then the city tomorrow, I'll shoot him a call, email, and I'll. Have to figure out what we're looking at, but now I've provided him with more detail, clear, based on conversations that have, county officials and city officials from understanding the scope of the agreements. More to come, October twenty eighth, hopefully a lot more.
Good there. Not for joint jurisdiction, since we did the committee already. Any other commission reports? Executive session? I think Jeffrey said none, right, Jeffrey, you said none?
I just said none, that's right.
I don't have anything for an executive session.
Oh, I do. Uh, can. Contractual, not legal. We'll go legal. Actually, it's gonna be both, it's gonna cross both lines, okay?
Well, let's go in for both, and then, obviously, if it's outside the scope of the executive, at any point on, you know, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, it'll, it'll cross both ones, so.
The same thing, one twenty-five, two subset, three.
All right, and we're going to executive session for one twenty-five, there's two, yes, three. Second. A motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, for the executive session. Let it take a motion, session.
So, move.
Second, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, the motion of the hearing.
Before you do that, we also need to, I'm sorry, one more. Just notice again on the movements of all, that it'll move rather than the.
So, on October twenty-eighth, it will be, the commission meeting, till further notice, will be held at the new Public Safety Center at twelve fifty Stanford Street, in the training room.
And Carrie, I think, has a game plan for, providing more notice for that.
We'll just have to tell everybody who comes to get on the agenda, too, I'm trying to remember, if anybody asked. Sure, try.
Might get a little wet if you try to make that walk today.
Yeah. Got to dig the bike out. We just need garage. So, does anybody have anything else? We adjourned. Second. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, we adjourned.